I'd like to call to order the meeting of Monday, December 14th. If the clerk would please take the role.
Councilmember Amos.
Present.
Councilmember Archibald.
Here.
Councilmember Ashford.
Present.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz. Mayor Rapp.
Here. Before we move on, I just want to pass on well wishes to our fellow councilmember Ruiz, who is home recuperating from knee surgery, so he's not with us tonight. We'll move on to the minutes. You have the regular meeting of November the 23rd. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashford. Is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Amos, is there any additions, deletions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes will stand as submitted. We have one presentation tonight. If the clerk would please read that.
Chief Michael Reeves will recognize the JMC Edgerton Fund of the Community Foundation of St. Clair County for the $6,000 grant to be used specifically for the Police Department's efforts in attracting and recruiting police academy candidates that have family roots in the community.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. First of all, I want to introduce Cadet Brown, Cadet Smith. They work with the Port Huron Police Department, and this program is really what they're about. For a little bit of background, for the last three or four years, we've had a couple problems in law enforcement. It's not just particular to the city of Port Huron, but all over. And one is retention of employees, where you, we have a lot of employees that come and use some facilities as a training ground, then move on to more lucrative positions. And we're no stranger to that. We've had a number of officers that have come to the Port Huron Police Department, and we've outfitted and trained and kept for a year, a year and a half, and then have left for greener passages, passages if you will. The second part is a nationwide phenomenon that I think is probably pretty hard to understand. Right now, it's getting very difficult to find outstanding candidates that want to go into law enforcement or criminal justice. As an example, I'm told at one time, we used to have testing for candidates to become police officers in Port Huron, where they used the gymnasiums at Port Huron Northern, and they held it on two nights because they had to split up 1,400 people. We post in all our usual places and job websites and everywhere else, in our last posting, we had 14 people that applied to, for the job. 12 showed up to take the test, and seven passed the test. Now, that concerns me, that I don't get an opportunity to look at a broader pool, and I'm also very cognizant of the fact that the Police Department should mirror the community that it polices. It's important that we, that the faces that you see are faces that you're familiar with, and that you've come to know, and that they know the community and they understand the community. Some of those applications, although they're good people, they'll come from far away, Grand Rapids, Dearborn, to come see. And I know in the back of my mind that if we select them, they may stay a year, they may get that training, and then they'll transfer to a department close to their home, and we'll start that cycle all over again. So, we wrote a grant to the Community Foundation, and I want to thank Randy Myers for his assistance, and it was a two-pronged grant. One is for the retaining of employees, and we're going to do our retention through identifying new employees, and we're going to take the employees right from our own employee pool. And let me emphasize why, I think, why this works so well. We have ran a Explorer Program and a Cadet Program here for almost 25 years with the Port Huron Police Department. A number of the police officers you know now were former cadets with the Police Department. If we have, let's say, 25 officers that were cadets, 23 still are with the department at this time after 15 or 20 years. So, looking at that, a cadet generally comes in when they're 18 years old and may stay three, three and a half years. Part of the requirement says they have to pass a stringent background, and they have to be in college in a criminal justice or law enforcement program or something related to that, and have to be working towards a specific goal. Well, I want to introduce to you two candidates that we believe fit the retention program and what we will call ultimately a promotion program from the Port Huron Police Department. Tyler Smith here is a local man from Clyde Township. He's been living, working in the city for how many years now?
Almost two.
Two years. He's a graduate, I believe, will be graduating from Ferris's program through SC4, and he's indicated that he wants to work in his hometown area. That's the type of person that I'm looking for, that comes from this area or comes from this community. Same thing with Jamie Brown. Hometown face, working on his degree at SC4. He's a few credits shy for this next step up, but we position him as a possible candidate. We received $6,000 for 2015, and another $6,000 for 2016. So, as we project vacancies now, we'll be going to our cadets as we mentor them and work with them in their classes, but also they learn how we operate as an agency, identify those that have the potential to become police officers for Port Huron, and then they'll work with us, sign an agreement, and they'll go to the academy, paid for by these grants, so it won't cost the city any money, and upon their graduation, we'll promote them to police officers with the city of Port Huron. I think they're examples of what we'll see in the future. I want to thank specifically Councilwoman Ashford, who about a year and a half to two years ago approached me on what we could do specifically to garner more local help, to really look and find more people from the city or from the surrounding area that understood Port Huron and understood the ways of it. And I'm not saying that people that come from the outside can't understand, because I'm an outsider, but there is, there is a period of time that it takes to get used to the way we do things, and then also to understand the community and how it operates. And I appreciate her feedback. She's been diligent in suggesting candidates and working with us to identify potential candidates, and thank you.
Thank you.
So, as we go forward, I just wanted to introduce you to these two cadets. Tyler will be leaving our employ temporarily in January as he attends the police academy. I expect a position to open up in February or March, that he would be eligible for when he graduates from the police academy, and then we would promote him right into that position. And then Jamie Brown would be further down the road. So, I want to thank the Community Foundation, a total of $12,000, split between two fiscal years. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. It sounds like a great program. Is there anyone on council who has a question?
I don't have any.
Just congratulations to these two young gentlemen, the chief and co-councilmember Anita. I think it's a great step forward. I brought them up here. I figured it couldn't look bad between these two bookends.
[laughing].
I thought it was your, yeah, security detail.
These guys are pretty sharp.
Yes, go ahead.
No, I just have a comment. I'd just like to thank you, Chief, for the excellent follow-up. I love the strategy. I think that we, it's just like, we want people to shop here, right in the city. We want to do everything in the city, and I think when we get employees and bringing them along, and hopefully you have set up a template for others to follow in and around the city of Port Huron.
Absolutely.
And congratulations.
Thank you.
You guys are all set.
Thank you.
Thanks, yes.
Now is the time for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to come up and address the council, you can come forward with your name, and you have four minutes. Is there anyone who would like to address the council this evening? No one? You didn't want to, Dick?
No.
Passing? Okay. Then I'll declare public comment closed. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro-Tam Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ashford will take the vote.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Mayor Rapp.
Yes. Some of the items on the consent agenda, received and filed the quarterly financial report for the three-month period ending September 30th. Authorized the clerk to schedule a special election for May the 3rd to place on the ballot for voter approval up to .6214 Mills for four taxable years to expire, that expire next year, which is the local share of the continued operation of the Blue Water Area Transportation Commission, and it would then run from 2016 through 2020. Made permanent temporary traffic control order number 1291 for Garfield Street, she'll stop for Omar. Confirm and approve single lot special assessments for fines assessments and/or the cost of removing blight, lighting factors and/or causes of blight, as well as the abatement of nuisances. Confirm and approve single lot special assessments for special trash pickup in the right-of-way. Approved the scheduling of a public hearing for January the 11th, 2016, to hear comments on a code case at 1516 Division Street, and that would be it. Which brings us up to, from the city manager, number one.
Is to receive and file the comprehensive annual financial report for the year ended June 30th, 2015.
Do we have a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Mayor Pro-Tam Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ashford, I wonder if we could have Mr. Brennan. I see he has the auditors here, so we'll ask you to come up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are submitting the comprehensive annual financial report for the year ended June 30th of 2015. It has been prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and the pronouncements of the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. As in prior years, there are minor presentation changes as GASB standards are updated, as well as a more substantial change regarding our pension liability, which Plant Moran will go over shortly. This report, and you all should have received a copy, it's a rather lengthy reading. It contains four sections. The introductory section, the financial section, which includes our unmodified report from the independent auditors, the highest possible report. It includes management's discussion and analysis and the entity-wide and fund financial statements. Also, it includes a statistical section and the Single Audit Act section for our federal financial assistance programs. The city is comprised of over 30 separate funds. Each separate fund can be located by checking the table of contents. As the council reads through the CAFER in the coming days and weeks, please feel free to contact me with any questions you might have. And we have Joe Heffernan, Crystal Simpson, and Abby Adams here from the auditing firm of Plant Moran, and they are going to make a short presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I'll start with just one or two comments for the benefit of the audience. In terms of what an audit is, that comprehensive annual financial report you have in front of you is your finance department's product. What Plant Moran has is two or three pages of that, the audit opinion, and the opinion says that those numbers are reliable. There's two things we do as part of an audit. One is we look at internal controls that relate to financial reporting, so that we can determine where there's risks, and if we see any material weaknesses in the internal controls, we would report those to you in writing. We do not have any related to the city. The second thing we do, once we've evaluated the internal controls, is we test a sample of the transactions and balances. We don't reproduce the entire set of accounting records, but we'll look at where there might be more risk or where there's more sensitivity. Obviously, you need to know that the cash that is in the report is there. We confirm that with the bank. We probably audit that quite tightly. Beyond that, we look at where there's estimating involved, or where there's risk involved because there's been changes in the accounting or it's harder to determine some of the numbers. So, we spend more time in those higher-type risk areas. And then based on the work we do through those two efforts, is we then create an opinion, which in this case, as Ed said, is unmodified. And what unmodified means is we believe that the financial statements you have do fairly present. They're reliable, and they do fairly present in accordance with the same set of generally accepted accounting principles, the same set of accounting rules that every other community or local unit within the United States prepares their financial statements in. So, with that, we've put together, as we did the last year or two, the graphs that are now being put in front, and we've put, the audience can see them on the screen, and we've put hard copies in front of the council, so you could follow along if that's easier for you, and you don't have to strain your neck. And so, Crystal's going to take us through that. I would offer you to interrupt Crystal as she goes through, and you have any questions. Don't bother waiting to the end. Let's go ahead and catch that as it goes along, and then I'll cover our separate letter to the board, and Crystal is done.
All right. So, the CAFER that you have in front of you is almost 200 pages now, so we find it helpful to look at, so graphical presentation, as well as see the 2013 and 2014 numbers, which you won't see if you look at just the CAFER for the one-year presentation. Like Joe mentioned, if you have any questions, feel free to interrupt me as we go along. So, the first graph here is the general fund revenue, and we can see from 2013 through 2015. The total revenue for the year was just over 21 million. Of that, almost 13 million related to tax revenue, and that was about 62% of the total revenue. The tax revenue decreased from 2013 to 2014, and then you can see it did increase in 2015. However, that increase was related to the city local tax collections. Your property tax revenue actually decreased again this year. So, one thing that's important to keep in mind is that due to Proposal A, it limits that increase to the lesser of 5% or inflation, which in the past has been a little less than 3%. So unfortunately, you won't see it increase as fast as you experienced the declines in your revenue in the past. So, just keep that in mind when you're budgeting and looking at your revenue for the next year.
Excuse me. So, that means that that's just a moving target, then? It can go up, so there's no cap on that?
The cap is the lower of 5% or inflation.
Oh, okay.
And since 1994, that's when these rules started, inflation has averaged somewhere around 2.5%. Today, the actions here we're in right now, inflation was 0.3%. The state just sent that out a couple of weeks ago. So, for next year, the limit on each individual tax bill, the tax bill value will only go up 0.3%. Even if the value of the home, I hope goes up a lot more than that, the taxable value will only go up the 0.3% next July.
Wow, okay. Thank you.
Sure. And then you can see state and federal revenue was about 3.7 million for the year, and about 3.4 of that was the revenue sharing, so that's a large chunk of that as well. This graph has the general fund expenditures for 2013 through 2015. Total expenditures were about 21 million. Of that, the most significant expenditures were the public safety of about 4.8 million. That's about 61% of the current year expenditures. That was an increase of about 156,000 from 2014, and that was driven by the increase in salaries and fringes. Obviously, that's related to services you're providing to residents, so it's highly personnel-driven. The second largest is your general government expenditures. They were just over 3 million this year, and as you can see, that was pretty consistent This graph shows your general fund fund balance, and you can see the annual expenditures for each year there, and then the blue bar is the fund balance. The fund balance at the end of 2015 was about 4.5 million, and that was about 21% of your current year expenditures. And so, we get asked all the time, what should we be looking at for that percent to be? The Government Finance Officers Association has a best practices document, and they say you should be setting aside about two months' worth of fund balance. So, you were just over two and a half months, so you would have beat that best practice This looks at all governmental funds. The trend you can see is a steady increase in fund balance for the governmental funds. 7.6 million of that, or about 44% of your fund balance, is what we call non-spendable. That can be tied up in items like prepaid's or inventory, so they're items that you've paid out in cash. You can't re-spend that, but until you use it in the next fiscal year, you know, you still have that asset set aside. 3.7 million, or about 21%, is what's legally restricted. So, you have a third party that imposes restrictions, so say for your Act 51 money must be spent on roads, so if you have any fund balance left there, it's fully restricted. So, the remaining 6 million, which is about 35%, is within the city council's control, so it's either committed, unassigned, or assigned fund balance, that you can decide how to ultimately spend that money. This graph takes a look at more of the long-term view of the city. The assets are reported there on the left, and then you can see on the right are the liabilities. The net pension liability, so it's that brick-looking section, that's a new liability that's recorded this year. Like Ed mentioned, there was a new governmental accounting standard, number 68, that was issued this year, so you had to bring on that liability onto your balance sheet.
Yeah. If I could, yeah, I just, I only want to step in, because this is the, is a gigantic change, and I think this graph shows how massive this accounting change is. When we look at the government-wide statement of activities, we're counting really all the assets and all the liabilities, and when you look on the left side, the assets, we've put those peach or orange color on the bottom, would be the current assets, the same kinds of things we're counting in the different funds. And that blue part above it is the capital assets, very significant. There's a lot of money that the city has invested in the roads and the buildings and the police cars and fire trucks and all those other capital assets, very significant. On the right half, we have that orange or rusty color one on the bottom, the current liabilities, same kinds of things that are counted in your individual funds like your general fund. And then the darker blue line would be the long-term debt that we had on top of that. That used to be, those bars used to be what we counted when we looked at the government-wide statements. Starting this year, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board said, you know, legacy costs, the pension and retiree healthcare, need to be improved in terms of how we're accounting for that. And the size of this change, if we look at the right side, those bricks, as Crystal was saying, would be the net pension liability, very, very significant number. And on the left side, where we also have it in the black and white, is the deferred outflows related to it. So, those two really kind of go together, and as you can see, those really changed the picture this year. But what we also added on top of this, over on the, on the right side, we've got the polka dots, I guess those are, still in black and white. We wanted to let you know that in three years, the same change that we just made for pension will be made for retiree healthcare. And it's, it seems inappropriate to talk about one without the other. The accounting rules, starting right now, are in a transition. We're beginning at June 30, 2015, we're counting the net pension liability, but beginning June 30, 2018, we'll be counting the net retiree healthcare, also called net OPEB, means the same thing.
So, they're the change of polka dots, aren't they?
So, those, that polka dot one will be counted in three years, but we wanted to put it up there, because really, legacy costs are legacy costs, and whether it's pension or retiree healthcare, in my mind, they're both the same kind of very long-term liability. It's not a current liability that you need to budget for, but it is a long-term claim against the city that will impact over, over decades, will find its way into impacting the general fund.
So, you need to show it, so it can reflect that, in case your question's going forward.
Yes. And so, when you look at that, once we, we put the retiree healthcare in there, the liability is, the bar on the right, is larger than the assets, the bar on the left. So, there will be a negative net position in three years when we start counting that. And what that means is, we have not asked our residents to fund the full cost of retiree healthcare and pensions. And when we get into the letter later on, I'll talk a little bit about, are we paying what the actuary has asked us to? Yes, we have, absolutely. And yet, we're still behind. And what that means to me, very clearly, is in the future, and you may not notice it for five years or 10 years, but you will, it will come due, if you will. Those costs of the retiree healthcare and the pension will have to grow to pay that liability, and that will have an impact on the ability to budget in the general fund. Not today, not this year, but over decades.
Joe, I'll give, interrupt you there real quick. So, it actually is affecting our budget already. In regards to our fringe cost, our fringe costs were moving from around 62%. The actual cost this year is closer to 75%, 78%. Our fringe fund, as you guys have been briefed, has hemorrhaged several million dollars over the last couple of years, and so we have to adjust our fringe cost to account for it. Although the total unfunded liabilities were not on the balance sheet, our annual contributions were. And so, those costs today are around $7 million in this fiscal year. Last year, they were about $6.5 million. Since 2006, in 2006, our pension annual contribution was 3.25 million. Last year, it was 3.75 million. So, we projected $7 million, based on the schedule that MERS gives us, our costs will rise to about $8.2 million within the next 24 months. That comes directly out of the fringe benefit fund, which directly impacts the fringe rate, and the fringe rate is then stratified across to all of our operating funds. Most specifically, and most importantly to the citizens, would be probably the general fund. And in the general fund, that directly affects our level of funding for public safety, police and fire, for parks and recreation. And so, as that annual contribution grows, and our wages are, and our revenue is stagnant because of Prop A and the cap on property taxes, this will continue to be probably the, one of the greatest issues facing the community moving forward, is how do we address our unfunded liabilities? Because again, our annual ARC payment is growing much more rapidly than our economic expansion, or our ability to capitalize on economic expansion. And so, we dealt with that in the last budget here, of having to account for the fringe cost. I believe this, last year, our fringe benefit fund was short $2.5 million. The previous year was about $1.5 million. In the previous year, all the way back to 2012, '13, it was about $680,000 short. We have to fix that to account for these costs. We cannot run that fund dry. And so, we've adjusted our fringe costs, but again, that directly affects our operations. And so, you know, we dealt with that in the last budget, but this will be something we deal with every single year, is to fill this gap in funding, because it will become sacrifices of something else.
The graph that Crystal showed two slides ago, where we saw the three-year trend in our total expenses and fund balance, we've been able to maintain that. That tells a very good picture. But when I look at, where are the financial challenges for the city of Port Huron? Funding the legacy costs, pension and retiree healthcare, are number one, two, and three on my list.
I appreciate that, because we've been talking about it since the day I got here. And so, I think what's important is, and one thing I'm very proud of, is that we have been remarkably proactive in the last 24 months, well, 18 months, addressing this. So, we're on top of it. We're, we have a game plan moving forward. In fact, we, I spoke to the Michigan Municipal League about this exact same topic in September to their annual convention, because I do believe it's the most pressing issue facing our community.
All right. So, just to reiterate how important this is, without the liability, the net position would have been about 69.4 million this year, so the equity of your governmental activities. After that net pension liability was brought on to your balance sheet, that was about 43.8 million. So, you're, this reduced your net position to about 28.4 million. And then, like Joe mentioned, in June of 2018, when the OPEB or retiree healthcare liability comes into play, we estimate that would be about another 35 million. So, that'll take your governmental activities net position negative by about 6 million. You're not alone. There are a lot of other communities that are in the same situation as far as that negative net position, but just to reiterate how important that liability will be on the balance sheet going forward.
Real quick, the assets that we list there, not to be confused, these are not cash in the bank. These are everything we have. So, our streets have value, our wastewater plant has value, our water filtration plant has value. But we can't liquidate those to meet the obligations, and so, this is a little bit rosier than it really is, because we cannot sell the water plant to pay the annual payment. We cannot sell the wastewater plant, and we can't, you know, hawk off the streets. So, the assets are not cash. We don't have that much cash in the bank. And I think that's important to note, because someone will say, well, they have over $80 million in cash in the bank. That's not quite, that's the position, the net physical position.
Oh, I think that's why they call it assets.
Yeah, well, for the community.
If it was in cash, okay.
All right. So, this fund takes a look at your water, or this graph takes a look at your water fund. You can see your operating revenue, expenses, working capital, and then cash for 2013 through 2015. We can see that the operating revenues have exceeded the operating expenses, creating an income for each of those years there. The cash increased by about 416,000 from 2014 to 2015, so you ended up with about 4.1 million in cash at the end of the year. The working capital here is the current assets of the fund plus the current liabilities, so kind of similar to the last graph we just looked at, but it's all current. And that's a good indicator of the health of the funds. They have current assets available to make payments on those current liabilities. You can see the working capital decreased in 2014 and 2015, but it was about 1.9 million for 2015. However, if we look at this next graph, I think it's important to look at the implications of the full accrual basis, as well as the modified accrual. So, the full accrual is, it factors in all of your long-term liabilities, and then your capital assets. So, like Mr. Freed mentioned, you can't go out and spend the assets that you have in that fund that you need to provide that service. You can see on this basis that the revenue bar there does exceed operating expenses. However, if we go over to what's called the modified accrual, we take the operations expense, which is the orange part of your expenditures, and we back out depreci- which is the orange part of your expenditures, and we back out depreciation expense, because it's not a cash item, it's, it's more of a long-term cost of that asset over the useful life. The, the blue bar there is your debt payments, so this includes principal and interest, which was about $3.9 million for the current year. And then that, that small green bar is your capital outlay, so purchases of more capital assets. We did put that there net of the, the proceeds that you got from the, from grants or other sources to purchase the assets. But you can see on the right-hand side there, that the expenditures actually exceeded the revenue on that basis. So a lot of times, when we're looking at the full accrual, it might paint a better picture, like on the previous graph, but when you look at the debt payments and other items that aren't recorded on, on the full accrual, such as the principal and interest payments, you can see that, that you needed to increase those rates in order to cover some of those This graph is similar to the prior graph for water, but it looks at the sewer fund and presents the same information. You can see that the operating expenses in this fund actually exceeded the revenue for each of those years. And then the working capital, you can see, has decreased each of the last years presented there. However, cash did increase between 2014 and 2015, and that, again, was related to the increase in the rates during the year. Again, if we look at this on the modified versus full accrual basis, again, you can see on the left-hand side that the revenue does exceed the expenses. But if we look at the, those same items on the right-hand side, the debt payments for this fund, principal and interest, were about $7.3 million this year. And then the capital outlay costs were about $722,000. And again, that operations is your, your total operations, less your depreciation expense. And it does exceed your revenue. But the revenue there also includes a transfer in of $2.4 million as well. So again, this paints a little bit of a different picture than what you're used to seeing in the CAFR presentation. Are there any questions on the graphs?
Anyone have any?
If not, Joe, go ahead and cover the letter.
What's a comment? You did, yeah, you did a great job. I do this at work, graphs, very simple and very easy to read, and like, told a story.
Thank you. Okay, we also have about an eight-page letter that I'll go through really very quickly, really just taking us through audit observations and any other informational items that we have for you. So on page two of the letter, we go through our audit observations, and I won't read the first part of this, our responsibility under U.S. generally accepted auditing standards, and really just explaining the difference between what management's responsible for in terms of putting internal controls in place, and then our responsibility as auditors. The first half of this letter, I'll go through relatively quickly, because there aren't a lot of, of items in here of concern to talk about. The bottom of page two, we go through qualitative aspects of accounting practices, and we note that footnote A goes through each of your accounting principles. And on the top of page three, we do point out there was a change in accounting this year. It was the change to adopt GASB Statement 68, which is the pension accounting that we just spent quite a bit of time talking through. So anytime there's a change in accounting, we'll bring that to your attention and explain to you why that change was made. Going on through accounting estimates, we bring to your attention wherever there's items in your financial statements that had to be estimated, and that's always going to be in some financial statements, some things are subject to estimation. It's not like cash that can be counted, or accounts payable, where we can look at the invoices. And so in the City of Port Huron, there's really three items. It's what is that pension obligation? What's the value of the retiree healthcare obligation? And then your various self-insurance liabilities, trying to estimate how many claims will come in that need to be paid through the self-insurance fund. And as we really look through those, we look at the estimates management's making to make sure that they're relatively fair, neutral, they're not biased one way or the other. And we think you've got a good conservatism built into your estimates, and we think that those are reliable numbers. There's, there's nothing of concern, and if there were, we'd be bringing that to your attention. At the bottom of page three, there are no difficulties encountered in performing the audit. We had no disagreements with management as we were going through the audit process. And in terms of uncorrected misstatements, there was only the one relatively minor misstatement that's attached at the back, and that's the taking the net pension liability and also attributing that not just to the water sewer funds, but also to some of the internal service funds. There were no other significant findings or issues to bring to your attention, and no unusual management representations for us to let you know about. So I will move to page six, which is where we give our more editorial comments, informational items that we think we'd want to bring to your attention. And the first item we have is to talk about legacy costs. One of the really good things with the change in the rules for pensions is they ask for new information from the actuaries that are reported as disclosures in your comprehensive annual financial report. And in the second paragraph, we talk about one of the comparisons we're now able to make. And for the calendar year, because you're in MERS, and MERS reports on a calendar 2015 basis, so that's the information that's being disclosed. MERS, through the actuaries, asked the city to pay in $3.2 million as a contribution. But they show how the liability changed from year to year. And when we look at the full accrual pension expense from that basis, it was about $5.3 million. We believe that that ratio is very informative. That was 61%. If the amount, now you paid in exactly what the actuaries asked you to pay in, and they did an actual evaluation using the actuarial standards of practice. I'm not suggesting that, that the city didn't pay what they should have, but that actual evaluation resulted in $3.2 million, which is less than the full accrual pension expense. That means, in accounting terms, that the liability that we were just talking about is not going to shrink. The only way to shrink that liability on an annual basis and decades-long basis is to be contributing more than that full accrual pension expense. So that $5.3 million number four pension, I would call the, let's tread water, and if we want the liability to be reduced, we'd be contributing more than that. MERS only asked us to contribute $3.2 million. Now, this is a comparison, this 61% is something we literally were not really able to do before the new accounting changes and providing the new information. Now, one of the things that has happened coincidentally to this, I don't know, but about a month ago, MERS started sending out emails indicating they're making three changes to their actuarial methodology. They're reducing the interest rate from 8.25% down to 7.75%. They are changing the period that they're amortizing the unfunded AAL, and they have changed the actual assumptions of mortality, of how long people will live, to recognize that people in fact are living longer. Those three changes are going to have very significant impacts, starting, I believe, July 1, 2017 contributions. So it'll be a year and a half, but I think it'll be significant in terms of the increases in contributions. It's good news, bad news. The bad news is, is it's going to be hard to work that into the budget. As an accountant, I would say the good news is it will start working down that liability.
If I can just point one thing out, as council will recall, in the last budget year, council set aside $500,000 additional, in addition to what our required ARC payment was, and that has been paid to MERS. So that's a practice that will, over time, help to reduce our unfunded liability, so we are taking a proactive step towards that.
Counter your, your case.
Absolutely. That will reduce this difference that I just pointed out, absolutely. Right.
It's in, real quick, I just, this is the, as you see here, the growth, and we're paying the additional half a million dollars, which I'm very proud of. This, moving forward, will be a huge challenge as, because of Prop A, because of cuts in revenue sharing. Our revenue growth, as I said before, just simply isn't keeping pace. And so as our economy grows and as new industries come, majority of all new revenues will go towards legacy cost. So it's not like we're going to have a windfall in the next couple of years or something that's going to give us cash at the table. It's going to be paying down these, these liabilities.
The second half of this comment, in the middle of page six, really just reiterates what we just talked about, that this year was the year that we adopted the new pension rule changes. And in June 30, 2018, three years from now, the city will be adopting the second accounting change, which would be retiree healthcare. Right now, that amount is, is at, is being measured at 47.7 million, as of June 30, 2013, the last time that was measured, because that only gets measured every two years. Assuming 80% of that is attributable to the governmental funds, which would, that's the percentage that we had for pension, we expect that will result in a, in a negative net position in the government-wide statements. Again, not in the general fund, it's not going to cause the general fund to have a fund balance, because it's using the modified accrual basis of accounting. It will impact the general fund to the extent contributions are required to be increased, which is what I, I fully expect. The third item we have here, new rules governing the management of federal programs. You've typically had a single audit every year, and as you receive federal grants, you're well aware, there's a lot of rules of what you need to do to comply with those different federal regulations. They all changed for new grants that were awarded after December 26, 2014. You may really just bring this to your attention so that you're aware of it, you may see administration coming to you with some changes. There are some things they've got in the new rules regarding procurement policies, ethics requirements, so if you see some of those things, it's likely in response to the changes in the grant requirements. And then the last item we have on page seven is to let you know that Act 51, and that's the act that gives you the, the major street and local street funding sources from the gas and weight taxes. There's been a change in that legislation, and starting in a year and a half, they will be asking for what's called a performance audit. I don't expect that that will have a negative impact on the city, because I think we've been looking at that as part of our audit anyway, and the city's well aware of the different compliance requirements within Act 51. But it'll just be a separate report that MDOT is going to ask you to have done, to document to them that you've been complying with Act 51. And then with that, I'll stop and take a second pause, if you have any questions on either that letter or anything else in, in the work project you've got in your package tonight.
Does anyone have any questions, comments? Thank you for your presentation. Well done.
Appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Matt in there?
Yes, Mr. Freed.
I'd just like to take a moment to recognize Ed Brennan and his team in the Finance Department. Every year, this is a testament to our internal controls, our segregation of duties, our prevention for fraud, but also the fact that we have stacked the plate pretty tall for the Finance Department throughout our budget last year, developing cost-reduction strategies. I constantly am requesting updated data and financial projections from them, and they always have it to us in a timely manner, to which I can pass on to you. If you all recall, all the presentations that I have given over the last 18 months, the Finance Department actually prepares the vast majority of those for, for me. And so I just thank Ed and his team for excellent work. I think they have, we may not like the information, but it's accurate and it's timely. And also, you know, we should give a shout-out to John Ogden as well, for his decades of leadership in that department as well, to handle the baton of the operation. And I thank Plant-Ran for working so closely with us. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. We will now move on to item 200 from the city manager. Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't, we, we haven't voted on it yet. This is a vote on receiving and filing.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes.
Now we'll move on to item two.
Is accepting the bid from Gornold Ford in the amount of $54,140 for two 2016 Ford Interceptor utility vehicles for use by the Police Department, in accordance with the State of Michigan My Deal Purchasing Program, with $50,000 funding from donated funds.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald and Councilmember Ashford. Is there discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Harris.
Just a comment, I'd like to, to thank Police Chief Reeves for his endeavor, his endeavorment. He knows how, how passionate I am about buying, buying locally, and it's kind of been a little circus in the last, since I got this agenda and stuff, trying to chase down and get the best price we can and trying to buy local. But as I've kind of found out today, some of our local businesses are not quite as much interested in, in the city's businesses as they are making larger profits, and I guess they chose to, just stand on the sidelines. So I, I have to say, I'm going to have to vote for this this time. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Ashford.
I'd just like to congratulate, yeah, because he sure, you should, God sure did have a circus thing going on here. I thought, oh, here he goes again. Let's buy him a cup of coffee. Thank you, Mayor Rep.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this? We will take the vote.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes.
Item three, please.
Is accepting the proposal from Hammers Contracting LLC in the amount of $10,975,000 for the refurbishing of the debris body of the mobile sewer cleaning vehicle used by the Utilities Division.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Harris, is there a second?
Report.
Councilmember Amos, is there discussion?
Can we have an explanation behind this purchase? Thank you.
Also, there's a big difference in price, for sure.
Yeah, well, that's what...
Councilwoman Ashford, Madam Mayor, Councilwoman. This particular vehicle is 2003, it's a VAC truck, and it's very important for the street program, and that it cleans, helps keep the utilities, the inlets clean. The use of this has essentially a very deleterious effect on, it's a steel box, it's such that, you know, everything is thrown into it, and between the sand and the, and the metal and things, it just wears it out. This, this vehicle is about 13 years old, and it's getting close to its end of life. Replacement would be in the order of $360,000, but we figure we can...
$360,000?
Yes, ma'am. And, but we're not going to replace it. In fact, we're not even going to replace the entire bed that is bad, we're going to simply reline it. And we, the best bid we got is for $10,000 and, and change to reline it with a, with a steel panels. And this will help it survive another couple of years.
Is that still, because you have a bid down at $21,000, so, and this is half of that, so same quality?
Well, we asked for proposals, and we evaluated both of them and found that we could live with the smaller number, just replacement of the, of the interior of this box. The other, the other adds placement of more and more parts that, you know, essentially the entire vehicle plus hoses, and, you know, things that we didn't need to necessarily take care of at, at this time. So we're trying to be prudent with fiscal funds.
Yeah, I want you to be prudent, but I don't want to mess around and have to come back again, if, you know, like, like a Band-Aid, you know, I want to weld it and make sure we can get the best...
Yes, ma'am.
...out of it, long-term, so. Okay. I can live with it.
Is there any other discussion or questions from anyone on council?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
There's one more for Lenny.
Oh, guess you have to go back. Short walk.
We have one other sewer VAC truck in operation that's fairly new, don't we? We, we don't have a VAC truck that's fairly new. We had to rent one because this one was out of service this summer. Thought I remember talking about it at one point.
Okay, thank you. If there's nothing else, we'll take the vote.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. We'll move on to resolution number one.
Is authorizing 14 payments.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ashford, is there discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Item two.
Is authorizing the city manager to proceed with the closing of the sale of 2656 24th Street in the Port Huron Industrial Park to ALD Thermal Treatment Incorporated pursuant to the terms of the lease agreement.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Amos, is there a second?
Support.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Harris.
I guess the only question I got in this agreement that goes back quite a few years is, is we had an option to buy it at a set price or a fair market value, and was there any determination why we didn't choose fair market value, or is, or is it advantageous to us?
That was decided back when the original agreement was, the fair market value was determined back then, in 2003. I would like to note that this has been an incredible deal for the, for the citizen's support here on, and the fact that we rented this for about 1.5 million dollars when we, when we bought it, and the lease payments over the last, since 2003, have amassed more than, was it 2.7?
1.8 million in lease payments.
1.8 million in lease payments, and now we're going to be able to sell it for just around $500,000. But in addition to the revenue that it created for the land purchase fund, which we use to subsidize water and sewer rates, people ask where that money went, we are able to keep your rates lower, using that money to pay down the water and sewer debt. We also committed to, I believe it was $10 million in the equipment, and also hiring 40 employees, which they did, so this was a huge economic driver, and it was a carrot to get that business here. So something the city council became very, very proud of, a solid deal, more than 10 years later, for the people of Port Huron.
Any other discussion? We will take the vote.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. We'll move on to item three.
Is approving the five-year interlocal agreement with Oakland County to provide information technology services for the courts and law enforcement management information system, commonly known as CLEMIS.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there discussion?
Could the chief give us a little overview of that? I know we had a prelude to this, some action items we did prior, so if you could drive it home.
Sure. CLEMIS, as you're aware of, is a system, it's a police records management system that we've entered into an agreement with, through Oakland County, they're the fiduciary, and I believe there's over 172 different agencies now that belong to CLEMIS, through courts, police, and fire, law enforcement services. Part of this agreement is, is the backbone, or a lot of this, is what CLEMIS does on a daily basis in helping, assisting, and managing the, this system. They maintain all the servers, they maintain a good portion of the network capabilities here, and our IT department does a wonderful job in supporting our IT needs. But this agreement is no different than it's going out for the rest of 170 some agencies that belong to CLEMIS, that you have to sign an agreement and work with CLEMIS. And it's an agreement between us and CLEMIS, that we won't let somebody else come in and do CLEMIS's work, because it is their work, and it is their property. As an example, at the beginning of next week, we'll switch over to a CLEMIS LiveScan and Pitcherlink process. And LiveScan, as if you're aware, is, I came back to the council recently with a grant that we had approved, and asked for electronic fingerprinting. But in order to facilitate that information, to run it through CLEMIS, to build the databases from CLEMIS, and share our information with multiple other agencies, it takes a different setup and things like that. This agreement covers things like that. The biometric camera system, the Pitcherlink system, that will share and draw mugshots and stuff like that from, is a CLEMIS feature. So this agreement is kind of a house cleaning, if you will. It puts, wraps it all up in one bowl, and it talks about the different services and levels of the perform. As an example, LiveScan. Another example would be the MDC, the motor, computers, the in-car computers and that system, and how they'll provide, what they'll do, and those type of things. It's an agreement I've seen before, it's an agreement we exercised in, where I've worked at before, so it wasn't nothing I'm not familiar with.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Any other questions for the chief?
Thank you.
We will take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?